My name is Michael Caplet and I am the moderator for the town of Sturbridge. I want to call this special town meeting of the town of Sturbridge formerly known as New Medfield to order. First to order businesses, if you'd all please stand and we'll have a pledge of allegiance. You can't hear me. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Try to get the microphone to work. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please stay standing. It's our practice at these meetings to have a moment of silence for several purposes. The first is we began this practice in 2001. I will speak up until I get a microphone. We began in 2001 honoring people who were passing away. Is this working? Yeah, okay. People who passed away as a result of the Iraqi war. And we began that night, we had a town meeting that night, September 11th, 2001, and we've continued it to the present. And as of today, the Department of Defense reports that we've suffered 7,033 casualties, deaths, as a result of the Iraqi Freedom, New Dawn, Enduring Freedom, Inherent Resolve, and Freedom Sentinel. Those are all the various operations in the Middle East since 2001 to the present. Our second purpose is we honor people in our community who have passed away since our last town meeting. And we've lost several. Lawrence Boniface, who was on the zoning board of appeals, the board of assessors, and the finance committee. Thomas Brogan, who was a DPW employee. William Grandone, who was a big member of the Council on Aging. Richard Peretti, a fireman. And Donald Suprenant, who was a longtime police officer here in the town of Sturbridge. And our third and last, and we've done this the last few years, is we also want to take a moment to remember all people who have died as a result of mass shootings and other public catastrophes, be they teachers, be they public officials, be they students, be they law enforcement personnel. We take a moment for all those purposes. Thank you. You can all have a seat now. Okay, some procedural issues. Do we have any non-voters here tonight, non-registered voters in the town of Sturbridge? Raise your right hands. Okay. I'm supposed to dictate a certain place where you are supposed to sit, and that is I'm dictating you will sit exactly where you are. Now, these people are not allowed to vote. If you see any of those rascals voting, please let me know and we'll take appropriate measures. Voting tonight will be, our town officials, if they could and they have already done it, they know the drill, they're already down here, which are easy access for people up here if we have any questions. Voting, we're going to vote with the, what do we call it tonight? You gave me a name for the pink cards. Pedal pink cards, pedal pink cards. Signify when I call for the vote, please call your, hold your pedal pink card up and I will count it. Occasionally, we may, if we need to, if we think it's a close vote, we may have a vote by divisions where we appoint counters and we divide the room up and we count the votes one way or the other. We're not going to have any electronic voting yet. We're still working on it. And point of fact, there's an article on the warrant tonight that deals with it, and we'll talk about that when we come to it. Speakers, they have to be recognized by me to speak. They should address the moderator and they should use the microphone right down here. When you come to the microphone, please give us your name and your address. The reason we want to do that is for two purposes. One, this is being broadcast live tonight, but it's also being recorded. People at home may want to know who that brilliant speaker was, whatever they had to say. Or quite frankly, they may say, oh, that person, we know he's full of hooey, so we're not going to listen to a word they say. But that's up to you, not me. Okay. Secondly, is when we attempt to later on reconstruct a record, if somebody made a motion, the town clerk needs to know that Mary Smith made a motion to such and such, and that Johnny Jones seconded it. So that may be important, so that's why we need the names and addresses. Okay. And when we have, if we have a discussion, I really think it's a better discussion if we alternate the pros and cons. Instead of having 10 people say, I'm all in favor of this, it gets kind of boring after the eighth or ninth person because there isn't much more you could say. So we'd like to have somebody for it, somebody against it, and it just makes it more interesting for everybody, including myself. Now, we've come up with a couple of proposed rules for the meeting tonight. And number one, it's that all speakers will be limited in any oral presentation to four minutes in length, which period may be extended by the moderator in his discretion for good cause. Speakers who are not registered voters may be limited to less time in the discretion of the moderator. PowerPoint or other visual, audiovisual presentations should be allowed up to 10 minutes in the discretion of the moderator. I think we anticipate tonight seeing some, I call them magic lantern shows, but a PowerPoint presentation here tonight. Number two is that the meeting shall not begin consideration of any new article after 10:30 PM and shall recess adjourned to a named date, time, and place agreed upon by the meeting. Any article under consideration which consideration has begun may be continued to completion of action on that article. I don't really think we're going to need it because our warrant isn't that long tonight, but just in case. Do I have a motion to accept those rules?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, hold your pedal pink card up. Okay, all in favor, anyone opposed? Motion appears to carry unanimously. Give me a second while I get organized here. As I said earlier, we're also doing something different tonight, and that is that we are going to put up on the screen behind us, and hopefully everybody can read it, the warrant articles. And also you'll be able to see the recommendations of the finance committee. And don't forget in Sturbridge, the recommendation of the finance committee becomes the main motion that we consider. Okay, for parliamentary procedure, we're going to use two books. By our bylaws in Sturbridge, we use the town meeting time, which is put out by the Massachusetts Moderators Association, and that's substituted, supplemented actually is what I mean to say, by Robert's Rules of Orders when needed, and by the moderator's own good common sense if he has any. We'll see. Okay. Do we have any children here tonight? I don't see any, I don't quickly, seeing none. I see a lot of young faces, but not any children. Okay, we'll skip that part then. If needs be, we'll appoint counters. If somebody wants to do it, kind of think about it, because when we call, if we don't get people, we have to drag them out and it could slow down the meeting. The fire department, two things. We want you to acquaint yourself where the emergency exits are in this room. It's good to know where they all are. Number two, unless you are serving a function, being the constable or a police officer, we really want everybody to have a seat, because we cannot be blocking the exits. And number two, I can't be counting votes if people are walking around or coming and going, and he says, I don't know if I've counted you or not. So if you want to participate in the meeting, please take a seat. Okay, we're pretty much done on the preliminaries. The warrant for tonight, do we have that, Madam Clerk? Okay, there it is. Okay, I've had the opportunity to observe, review the warrant, and I'm satisfied it's been properly prepared, properly executed, posted in all the appropriate locations, and it has the return of that affixed. Do I have a motion to accept the return of the warrant?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Next, in a lot of towns, you'll have to go through a reading of every single article, every single recommendation, and every single report. That is not our practice here in Sturbridge. But what we like to do is we like to have a motion to waive the reading of the warrant, the individual articles, and the finance committee recommendations. All the recommendations are contained in the warrant that you received when you walked in, okay, so you have it. You will hear me probably say or repeat the recommendations of the finance committee just to make sure everybody got it. Okay, do we have a motion of that effect?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by listing up your pedal pink cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Appears to pass unanimously. And the last, as we talked about a minute ago, the finance committee recommendations are our main motion. That's a motion to whatever it's going to say. And these things have been discussed, debated, voted on, talked about, thought of, for a long period of time by the finance committee, hours and hours. And it's kind of, they've already had motions and seconds done in their committee, so we also ask for a motion to waive the necessity tonight of seconding their motions, just to save a little time. Do I have somebody make that motion, please?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, waiving the necessity of seconding finance committee recommendations. Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Okay. First article on the agenda tonight is Article 44. Why do we start at 44, in case you don't come regularly? What happens is that we start with Article 1 at the annual town meeting. We finish the annual town meeting, we go on to the first special. It always picks up the article numbering after that. This being the first special we've had after the annual town meeting last June, that's why we're starting with Article number 44. And this is the senior center feasibility study and cost estimate. The recommendation of the finance committee is to approve the article as written, and that's to approve the sum of $89,150 to conduct a feasibility study and cost estimate. Okay. If anyone that wants to comment on it, I know the town administrator does, Mr. Bridges.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Can everybody hear me? All right, just a little background, and we're going to have a brief PowerPoint on this issue. Back in 2017, the town received a needs analysis on a study of the existing senior center. And that needs analysis stated that the building was about 5,000 square feet short of what it really needed to provide the programs necessary in a 21st century senior center. And from that study, there was a series of discussions about doing a full-blown cost analysis to what it would cost to renovate that building and provide the extra 5,000 square feet. And that led to a discussion about what would be the cost of building new. So as we went through last summer and had those conversations, we identified two parcels, the Shepherd parcel and the 170 Cedar Street, which is near the Cedar Street Recreation Area, as potential sites. Now, each one of these three options has challenges, okay? The existing center has challenges in the size of the site and the fact of trying to renovate under occupancy. 70 Cedar Street has challenges in relation to topography and access, and then 70 Cedar, 70, or excuse me, the Shepherd parcel, has a challenge in the fact that it has a conservation restriction on the property that we would have to work through one way or the other. So we're going to go through a brief PowerPoint and just talk about the process and the existing conditions of the building. So this is the existing senior center on Route 20, next. Limited parking. Those of you that visit that center know full well, there's only about 17 parking spaces. And the seniors routinely park off-site and walk to the building from across the street on all angles of the street. Next. Limited kitchen facilities. This is only a heat-up kitchen, it's not a cook kitchen. We have food brought in for senior meals. Any new facility or renovated facility would like to upgrade the kitchen facilities? Go ahead. The dining room, it can't accommodate a tremendous amount of people. It's a tight squeeze most times. The multipurpose room is on the third floor of the building. That's our most usable space in terms of flexibility, but it is constrained and it is on the third floor, accessible by an elevator, but in event of emergency, you're not supposed to use the elevator. Go ahead. A couple of weeks ago, the heating system sprang a leak. We flooded the entire basement, which took the exercise room offline. Our insurance company once again just repaired the floors and the walls in that room. This happened a year ago, or two years ago, something like that. This is the second time in two years we've had to renovate that basement or refinish that basement due to a heating system failure. The basement lobby, it was damaged by the water. Keep going. You can still see some more water up in the ceiling. So that whole floor had to be removed and replaced where the pool table is in the basement. Keep going. Water got behind the walls, it was flooded. Again, more flooding in the building. The elevator pit got flooded, the steel beams are damaged, and then the lack of a catwalk for service areas and access to the HVAC systems is very limited, and the insulation in the current building is minimal. So in part of the process during the summer, we issued an RFP for consultants to tell us how much would a new building cost and how much would it be to renovate the building. And part of that process, we got a series of basically concepts or site analysis, very brief, where, what could a new or renovated building look like on each site? So for 480 Main, that was the sketch of what could fit there in the number of parking spaces. So we end up with roughly a 13,000 square feet, 12,000 to 13,000 square foot building with 40 parking spaces, basically consuming the front lawn with parking. Next one. 70 Cedar Street, we, this is where it could go, it's adjacent to Cedar Road. Now, we know Karen Road is private, and we know we can't use Karen Road for a public road. So everything's going to have to come in off Cedar Street and pass by the recreation area. But it will fit basically as a concept. Next one. And then this is 80 Route 15 or the Shepherd parcel. There's significant environmental areas that we have to stay away from, but we can fit a 12,000 to 15,000 square foot building on the site with a septic system and a well because there's no public water in sewer. But again, there are constraints to each, constraints to each parcel. So we know conceptually, maybe it could be done. So now the study is going to be very detailed. It's going to talk about mechanical systems, electrical systems, soil conditions, and give us a turnkey analysis for each site, which means we're going to know what it costs to build a building on each parcel, or it's going to eliminate parcels because it's not feasible, okay? But the product of the study and the reason it costs so much is we have engineers, both civil engineers, mechanical engineers, electrical engineers. We're doing a full hazmat study of the existing building, so we can come back to town meeting at some future date with a number that says if we spend X amount of dollars, we can get X amount of building. There's no more studies necessary. We have the information we need to move forward with either a new building or a renovated building, which town meeting can then vote on. And that's, that's what's before you this evening. So thank you.
Mr. Bridges, why don't you stay there in the event we have some questions, maybe you can answer them for him, or maybe another person can. Okay, we've heard from Mr. Bridges. Anyone else care to be heard on this article? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, Linda Kocales, 110 McGilpin Road. Concern I have with the Shepherd parcel is that the town purchased this property with CPA money, which this is not allowable use, using the CPA money, let alone just having a conservation restriction. The conservation restriction is held by Opakum Trust. Has the town been in touch with Opakum Trust?
Yes, I had two conversations with the executive director. He's aware that this is going on, and all I said, and all I proposed to him so far was let us do the study and see where it goes. And that's the conversation we've had.
My personal opinion would be to actually have a motion to have a reconsiderate, take the Shepherd parcel off of here, because that's going to be such an uphill battle. And if we have that parcel taken off and you want to consider the renovation of 70 Cedar Street, that would be a better idea than having the Shepherd parcel on there, which no doubt is going to be a major uphill battle, and is, from a cost perspective, it shouldn't then cost $89,000 if you took that parcel off. And that's what I would propose, that they do a secondary motion to change it.
Well, okay, I think what you're doing here is making a substitute motion.
A substitute motion.
To approve the article with the deletion of the site of 80 Route 15.
That's correct.
Let me finish, please. So the sense of the article then would be to either renovate the present facility or do the Cedar Street site, okay? And we certainly couldn't add another fourth location, but I think that is within the scope of the article, because right now, it's certainly, I'm getting the nod from town council, so I feel comfortable now saying all is, but I think that's it. So you make a substitute motion to basically delete 70, I'm sorry, 80 Route 15 from the motion and to otherwise approve it as written. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. I don't mean to put words in your mouth. And do we have a second? Okay. Now, we're going to act first on the substitute motion, because that's what's here. If the substitute motion passes, that pretty much would end the main motion, the main article. Mike? Wait a minute, I'm not done, please. Everybody's, relax a second, okay? If we defeat the substitute motion, which is up to you voters, then we go back to the main motion and decide whether or not we're going to pass that motion, that article as written. Okay. You've spoken, you've spoken on this, we have a motion and a second. Any other speakers that want to speak to the substitute motion? Mike? Yes, sir. Okay, we'll get to you in a minute.
Hello, Paul Damri, Shampow Road. I like the motion that Linda just made, but there's been no discussion about changing the figure. We're now going from three down to two. It should not cost the figure that's in this motion to have to work done.
Well, I asked, if you heard me, I asked her specifically, otherwise approve it, that would include it. Do you know, does anyone know what it would cost to do a study for two sites as opposed to three? I certainly don't.
I do.
Okay, well, maybe we can hear from Mr., further amend this, I don't know how far we're going to go down the road on this, but.
We're changing that, need a substitute motion?
Hold on. You know, if you have a number to suggest, suggest it, but.
No, no.
Okay, please. I'll be the moderator, you be the finance committee, okay? Thank you. Jesus. Okay, one speaker at a time, it's all we can handle here tonight, okay? Do you have a figure in mind?
I have no idea, but it certainly seems if you want to do by threes.
Let me ask Mr. Bridges, let me ask Mr. Bridges if he has a figure in mind, if we drop out 80 Route 15.
I would like to address the motion first.
Well, why don't you answer the question, then you can, I'll give you the opportunity to address.
It would reduce the cost of the study by $25,650.
Okay, so whatever that number is, it's beyond my capability to do that math. So 89,150 minus 25, what was the figure?
25,650.
Can somebody help me on this? Give me a number. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, just hold on, we're going to, maybe have a motion, maybe not here, okay? While we're doing the math, Mr. Smith, you wanted to be heard.
Well, yeah, I had, my question was exactly that, because we had asked this question in our meetings, to break these apart as to what the cost would be. But I also wanted to point out that the actual cost is 105 something thousand, because it's the $89,000 we're appropriating here, plus the $16,000 that already exists. So it's a, it's a higher figure than that one hasn't actually been stated.
Okay. So it's really 105,000? You already have 16,000 appropriated for this, so an additional 89. What would the new number be? Okay, 63.5 plus the 16,000. Okay. I don't know that we need to amend it, because that's all they would expend, but if, if you want to, Linda, if you want to, I'll allow you to include that in your substitute motion if you want, to reduce it to, no, you know, I'll just accept it from the floor. 63,500 or in reality, 79,500, when you count the 16 that's already appropriated. We're not appropriating it tonight, we don't have to, just so you'll be aware, that's what the total cost would be. Mr. Bridges, do you want to address the amendment, the substitute motion?
Yes, thank you. We are well aware of the process in overcoming the conservation restriction. It's no mystery to us. But what we really need is a site that accommodates the needs of seniors. And the Shepherd parcel has at least four acres of its 8.5 that we could use that provides full access for seniors. It would provide possibly a one-story building, which is best for a senior center. It has tremendous traffic, limited traffic on that road, great site distance in both directions. From a location point of view, it's probably the best site. It's the least constricted, it's the least constrained, but it does have the conservation restriction. And we're not asking you tonight to lift the conservation restriction. All we're saying is, let's find out if it's feasible and what the cost would be to use this site. That's all we're asking. There'll be another vote whether or not to look at the conservation restriction. Now, we know as a town, in order to lift the conservation restriction, we have to get Opakum Land Trust approval, we get a Conservation Commission's approval, we have to get town meeting approval, and we have to go to the legislature. And I told my board of selectmen, who I work for directly, I'm willing to go down that path, because I believe if this study comes back and says this is the best site, that we got to do what's best, in the best interest of the client, which are the seniors of this community. So right now, this evening, all we're asking is let us do the study, and we'll bring that information back. And if y'all don't want to vote to lift the conservation restriction, if we can't put something together that makes sense, vote it down. But let us do the study. Thank you.
Okay, does anyone else who hasn't spoken yet want to be heard? And now we're talking, still talking about the substitute motion.
Jamie Goodwin, 262 Main Street. I don't think seniors are a particular point that we could, there's not enough money we could spend on seniors in this community.
Speak into the microphone, please.
Oh, sorry, thank you very much.
It comes out of the holder, if you want to hold it.
Yeah, all right, cool. All right, once more in time. So spending money on our seniors, I don't think it's a topic that this town could spend enough money on, but the notion that we have to overcome something to create the best site, such as conservation, seems illogical, especially when it comes with a higher price tag. So it really does make more sense to me to go with the more efficient and contained proposal that Ms. Kocales proposed. That's my two cents on this particular topic.
Thank you. Before we go any further, though I kind of accepted the amendment of the substitute motion from the floor, do we have a second to that amendment, just to make sure we got? Okay, we got a second, we're all set. Okay. Any other discussion, anyone who wants to be heard? We've had several people, I guess, in support of the substitute motion. Anyone else who wants to be heard in opposition?
Priscilla Jimmies. I think our seniors definitely need something. They need a new building, they need it renovated, they need something. My apprehension right now, as I'm listening to all this, and I heard Ms. Kocales's comment, is that I don't want to see a situation where we approve this and then come and find out that Route 15 is the best place, and then we have hurdles, and then we're going to argue about water and sewer, and the price tag to that is going to be prohibitive. The seniors are, we're going to be here, I won't be here, but in 20 years, we're going to be having the same conversation. And I'm not sure what the answer is here, but maybe we need to rethink whether Route 15 is a viable option, so that they can get something within a short period of time and not have to do more hurdles. How many hurdles have we already been through? The furnace, you see, it's not the first time. In my tenure here, this is the second or third time. Then they can't use the elevators. So now they got more restrictive. We need to move. And if taking Route 15 out is in the best interest of the seniors, I'm not, I don't know that it's such a bad idea.
Thank you. Anyone else care to be heard?
June Hammerly, Walkupon Road. I just want to call everyone's attention to the fact that we have elected officials here, and we have committee members that have already approved this and recommended that we go forward. And I just feel, I acknowledge the concerns about the conservation land, but I have to put trust that my representatives have looked at this and discussed this issue and have come forth with a unanimous recommendation. So I lobby in favor of supporting their recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Mary.
Mary Blanchard, 26 Fauqua Road. Granted, the Shepherd parcel does present hurdles. All the pieces present hurdles. If we have three choices to be studied, we will find out which one. They're all going to have things to overcome. We can face the battles when they appear, but in my mind, to have a choice is the best way to go. Therefore, I oppose the motion.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else on the substitute motion? And again, the substitute motion is to not investigate three sites, investigate two sites, and to appropriate only sixty-three thousand, five hundred dollars instead of the eighty-nine thousand, one fifty, I believe. Yeah, okay? And don't forget, we're not voting on it, but there already is another sixteen thousand dollars sitting already appropriated, which will also be used for this. So, it brings it up to seventy-nine thousand, or if we were ever to adopt the full motion, the original motion, we're bringing it up to a hundred and five thousand. Okay. We all set the vote? Any last comments? Yes, Mary?
Mary Dowling. I can see the pros and cons on both sides, and this was hard for me because I saw the Shepherd parcel get struck down for active recreation. It was only going to be soccer fields, and it didn't fly. So, this is, I don't know if this will even fly down the road. So, my question is, I don't know if we have this figure. If we moved forward with the substitute motion, what, in the future, what would it cost us if we were to have done a separate feasibility study for just the Shepherd parcel? I'm assuming it would, at that point, cost a lot more than twenty-five thousand. Is that correct? Because I just, I just want to see if the option would be down the road. I don't think it would be, because I think it would be cost, it would be a waste of money at that point.
Mr. Bridges, can you answer that?
Yes, it would cost more than twenty-five thousand dollars. But the real issue with maybe we can do this after, the results of the study are going to give you a number to build, either renovate a new senior, renovate the existing senior center, or build a new one. That number will have a shelf life. That number will be a real number for a very short period of time because it only gets more expensive as time goes by to build anything. So, once we have this study done, it's going to be incumbent on the community to move forward because whatever the number says, and whatever the decision is, whether to renovate or build new, we have to take that number and go because if we wait two or three years, that number's no good anymore. So, we'll be back at another town meeting saying we need another X amount of dollars to revise that number. This process is designed to give the community options and to give the communities a good number from which they can move forward on a senior center project somewhere and get this done and move on. So, we put to rest, at least for a generation, the issue of what's going to happen for the seniors in Sturbridge, okay? One final comment, and I understand the motion. Seventy Cedar Street, we've all talked about the need for ball fields. Recreation has a separate plan to use Seventy Cedar Street for ball fields in recreation. That was one of the reasons why we added a third parcel, which was the Shepherd parcel. Are there alternatives to consuming a parcel big enough to have ball fields on? And again, each one of these sites has constraints, and each one of these sites, the community is going to have to overcome the constraint to make this happen, no matter where we go.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak on the substitute motion? I think we're ready, yes, there's a hand up. Yes, sir?
Ken White, 41 Cooper Road. We have this parcel on Route 15 that was purchased by the town, and we can't use it. This is a chance to find out if we can use it to put a senior center building on. If the study proves that you can't do it, then we know you're going to have to do this sometime down the road. Why not do it now? Find out now if we can put a building on it or not. It's sitting there doing nothing. The town owns it, and we do nothing with it. Let's do something with it. Let's help out our seniors.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Any other late callers here? None. Yes, sir? If you want to speak, please put your hand up a little earlier to just move things along a lot quicker.
I was hoping not to have to do this, but, my name's Robert Levitt. I'm the person who worked for the town in putting the conservation restriction on that particular parcel that you're talking about. That conservation restriction is not an easy thing to take off. The state doesn't like to do it. All the towns who've dealt with this, who have tried to do it, have had a very difficult time doing it. It will cost a lot of money, and it's going to cost a lot of anger for a lot of people. There are other things that can be done. What I'm watching and listening about right now is that nobody's spending enough time to sit down and talk about a number of different possibilities that can be taken care of to deal with this issue. I suggest that we get some people together, and we know who those, a lot of those people who can be involved in this, and let's sit down and talk about something that makes a lot of sense without trying to do something that the state's going to not be happy about.
Thank you. Okay, we're getting to the last call here. Anyone else? Mr. Bridges, we've heard from you. If you have something new to add that...
I do. They've had a study committee working on this for four years? Five years. And they put out, they put out an RFP to all the landowners in the town and says, "Give us, we want to know if you've got land for us to buy to build a senior center on." And they got no response. The towns, all the town parcels are either too small, constrained by a conservation restriction, or have otherwise uses on. So, if there was a better alternative out there, if there was a good, clean, five to 10 acres somewhere, this wouldn't be a conversation. But we are so constrained as a town in where we can put things, we have to make these choices, and we have to do these types of studies. And again, that's all we're asking for you this evening, is a study.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Lois Petoniak, 293 Cedar Street. I just have a question. You had mentioned, Mr. Bridges, about the feasibility study, and you said the feasibility study could say whether or not it was permissible, or it was possible to build on a certain parcel, if it was Main, renovate Main Street, or Cedar, or the other one. And let's just suppose they say it is not feasible to renovate 480 Main Street. Does that mean that we would have a choice just from the other two? Or if they said it's not feasible on Route 15, and the only choice is Cedar Street, does that mean we have to go with that?
No, it, you would, there would ultimately be a decision to be made on which option is in the best interest of the community. So, you would still have three outcomes, but some of the outcomes may be better than the others, knowing full well that each site has its own challenge.
And if they say one is not feasible, does that mean, I mean, if that says not feasible, it means that, to me, it means that we couldn't even consider it?
It would, the feasibility would say, it would classify it as not feasible because of X. And we would have to decide if that's really something that's going to negate the possibility of using that site as compared to the other sites.
Okay, so would it still go before the town for a vote?
Whatever final option, final outcome becomes of the process, the town meeting will have to vote on it, yes.
Have to vote on.
To understand this motion, or the underlying main motion, we're not voting tonight to build a senior center. We're not voting to say that somebody else besides you people will end up picking the location. They will come up with feasibility and saying to build it at once, to renovate this will cost so much, and we'll give you this. To put it on the next site will cost you so much, and you'll get that. And the third site will cost you whatever it is, and you'll get these particular things. And then somebody will say, weighing those three, here's what we want to bring back to the town meeting, and this is what we want the people to vote on. You'll have the full opportunity to vote on whatever it is that they finally recommend, if it's anything. They may decide, none of these sites are feasible, who knows? Then you all have a chance to vote on it, and the appropriation of it, the money to pay for it, be something else. Now, whether that's going to be a bond, or what it's going to be, who knows? I'm not even going to guess at this point. But having said all that, we're only discussing tonight paying for a feasibility study. We're not buying anything except a study saying, you can do this on that site, it costs so much, do that on the second site, costs so much, and do the other thing on the third site, costs so much. Am I pretty much right? Yeah, okay. It's great. You said I'm right. I'm good.
Could I just make one short comment?
Please, go ahead.
A lot of people have talked about the parking at the senior center, and I know that that is an issue. I just want to say that for the majority of events at the senior center, and I do go there quite often, there are a handful of people at the senior center. It's not like we have a hundred people that come to the senior center continually, where we're, we're short of parking for some of the exercise classes, which is like maybe Monday, Wednesday, Friday for about an hour. And a lot of those people who are exercise people are very mobile, and parking, if they have to park across the street, I know it's not the best thing, but I don't think it's a real issue if we had more handicapped parking around the center. It was just a comment that I wanted to clarify because I think they just think that there is, you know, like, there are a hundred people coming, and there's only fifteen parking spaces. And that's a little bit, not quite exactly the way I see it. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Lee Peterkin, 70 Holland Road. So, I'd like to speak against the substitute motion. And my point is, we can't, the fifteen...
Speak into the microphone, please.
The Route 15 parcel is the most problematic, but we cannot, at this moment, prove that it can't be the best option. So, I believe it is worth it if we look into it, and we can always vote against it later. Thank you.
Thank you. No one else? Anyone else? Mr. Superdine?
I also, I had a question. The, it was stated that there were, we're very limited to the number of sites. I just had a question of why 8 Brookfield Road wasn't considered a possible site for a future senior center.
Can you answer that, Mr. Bridges?
It's small, and it still puts that traffic on Route 20, where we're trying to, if there are options, get the seniors' traffic off Route 20, which is already congested.
Thank you.
The ideal is to have a one-story building with plenty of parking.
It's larger than the existing site, considerable. And there is an existing signalized intersection onto Route 20, which would be, you know, it, on the surface, it would have some advantages over the existing site. I don't know why it wasn't considered.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, anyone else who hasn't spoken yet wants to make a comment? Why don't we bring this to a vote on the substitute motion? Again, if you vote for the substitute motion, we'll be only investigating two sites, renovating the present and Seventy Cedar Street, and that will be at a cost of sixty-three thousand dollars. Sixty-three five, okay? If we defeat this substitute motion, we'll go back to consider the larger amount of money, the eighty-nine thousand, six fifty, and to do the three sites. Okay. We all set on this? It's a majority vote. All in favor of the substitute motion, ring your pedal, raise your pedal pink card. All opposed to the substitute motion. The substitute motion is defeated. We'll now go on to the main motion. Now, do we need any more discussion on the main motion, or do we think we're ready to vote on it? We've had a pretty good airing of, pretty much. You want more discussion? Oh, okay, I don't think you did. Okay. Okay, let's come to a vote then. The main motion, again, let's be clear, because we've had a lot of discussion. We're going to appropriate, if it's passed, seventy, I'm sorry, eighty-nine thousand, six fifty. Thank you. See, I'm confused, okay? In addition, we already got the sixteen thousand already off to the side, okay? And we'll be investigating three sites, renovating the present site, 480 Main Street, investigating Seventy Cedar Street, and investigating eighty Haynes Street, the Route 15 site, it's commonly called. Okay, the Shepherd parcel, thank you. Okay, all in favor, raise your pink cards. All opposed, it passes by far more than a majority. Thank you. Moving on to the next article, Article 45. Okay, this is "Purchase of 501 Main Street for the Development of a Public Parking Lot." This will require a two-thirds vote because it involves the purchase of real estate by the municipality. Again, I think we have a Magic Lantern show tonight on this, one picture, okay? And at this point, it's been seconded. We have other business tonight, ladies and gentlemen, and this is your town. This is your chance to be heard on all these issues. They'll affect the quality of life and your tax rate, so you're welcome to stay. But if you don't want to stay, it's at your peril, I guess. Okay, let's go on to 501 Main Street.
Good evening. On the screen above you is a picture of the area around 501 Main Street. And this, this parcel here, I hope you can see it, it's outlined in red, is 501 Main, okay? Back it down, back it down. These other green parcels, all the heavy green, is already owned by the town, and it's what we call the Riverlands. This parcel here was originally on the warrant this evening as 53 Holland Road to acquire, but we're not ready for that yet, so we're passing on that article. So, one of the goals of the entire corridor here has been to increase public parking. You heard this evening that we have parking issues at the senior center. We also have parking issues for the restaurants and the other users in the area. So, the town, and they adopted a plan back in 2014 called the Commercial Tourist District, which called for additional public parking along Route 20. Last summer, the town issued an RFP that said, "Anybody along Route 20, want to sell us your property for public parking, please submit a proposal." The owners of 501 Main submitted a proposal. It was vetted by the Board of Selectmen. We negotiated a price of $244,000, which includes full rent, full removal of all the improvements, the buildings, the pavement, everything. We get a clean site, 100% clean site. Not only do we get parking with this site, but it gives us access to the town-owned lands in the Riverlands from Route 20. So, people who want to access this, these areas, we can get to a, build a bridge somewhere in here, which is part of the Trails Committee idea. And eventually, there'll be a trail called the Grand Trunk Trail that goes all through these parcels, out to here, and out to this road, and so forth and so on. So, not only do we get a parking lot, we get access to our own recreation areas from that site. So, it accomplishes a lot of goals for us as a town. And what we're asking for this evening is 244,000 to, A, get the parking lot, and B, have a future access point to our property in the Riverlands.
Thank you. Okay, do we have more discussion on this? Anyone care to be heard? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Beth Alicia, 500 Main Street, and I'm here to represent...
Okay, could you speak into the microphone, please?
I'm Beth Alicia from 500 Main Street, Sturbridge, representing Enrico's Brick Oven Pizzeria. And yes, parking is a big issue. And with all the talk with the...
Please speak into the microphone.
With all the talk with the revitalization of the Commercial Tourist District in town, it really is an issue. But in order to revitalize the town, you have to do something to make it more exciting. And to have the Grand Trunk Trails go in there, it would be, it would be a big deal. We're looking at things right now, like Putnam, Connecticut, or the Worcester Shoesbury Streets Restaurants that are just 20 miles from here. Wouldn't it be neat if they could just come to Sturbridge and think of this as like a restaurant row? And that would be easy to do if they had the enticement of other things, like the Grand Trunk Trails, Old Sturbridge Village, or the ability to park. I think in the last six years, there have been at least six restaurants that have gone under. Perhaps some of it is because of parking. You can't run a business if people don't have a place to park. So, the more economy that comes to this town, obviously, as you all know, it would be more money that would go into the tax base. So, if there's people coming here, spending money, there'd be more money for the budgets. I think it would be a home... I think it would be a home run for everyone involved to vote to buy that property across the street to put in a public parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Just two points, that the recommendation of the Finance Committee in this article was five in favor, one opposed, and one abstention. And the source of the money for this will not be from an increase in this year's taxes. It'll be to use $244,000 from free cash, which means tax money that was previously raised, a simple explanation, but not expended, I guess would be the simplest way to put it. Okay? Any other discussion on this? Yes, sir?
So Brandon Goodwin, Chair of the Trails Committee. If you look at the map, we actually have plans. Right now, WPI is designing a bridge to cross from that parking lot into the Riverlands. The trails already exist on the Riverlands for us to access, and we are in the process of designing five miles of flow trails. So these are smooth-flowing mountain bike trails and running trails that we're in the process of designing. So within two or three years, we'll actually have six to seven miles of trail on that property. And so this is one of the pieces that gives us access. It's a critical play. I mean, it's right in the center of town. On this side, on the town side of the river, or the 131, the 20 side of the river, you know, there's also a lot of room that we can talk about, things like dog parks and picnic areas and things like that. So it's something we're focused on as a committee. On January 1st, we had what we call our first day hike on the Leadmine property. So Rich and Denise, we advertise a hike where we bring people in from, from all, that use our trails, are on our email list and so on. We had 50 people show up for an hour hike into the property, turned it into a three-hour hike. None of them are from Sturbridge. You know, we had 50 people come from as far as Hartford, you know, for ecotourism. And that's one of the, you know, those two things we're trying to do as a Trail Committee. One is drive ecotourism, get people into Sturbridge. Two is to get people access to the properties. And this is a critical piece of that, so please vote in favor.
I do have a question if this is going to be free parking or if the town plans on putting meters.
I'm sorry, could you identify yourself, please?
Linda CoCalis, sorry, 110 McGillpin Road.
That decision's not been made yet. Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Superdine.
This is Michael Superdine, 140 Flam Lane. I, I'd like to speak opposed to this article for several reasons. First, the value of the parcel is substantially above the assessed valuation that the town receives. Secondly, in addition to the next article of $15,000, it would cost, you know, tens of thousands, maybe $100,000 to, in addition to the cost of the parcel. So there's going to be about 20, 23 parking spaces. It would cost over $20,000 per parking space, where we, right now, we could put in that many or more parking spaces just up the street where they're sorely needed at the senior center. We do have access to the Riverlands on existing town land at Turner's Field. And, and in fact, it would be much easier to access than crossing several hundred yards in an old, I think there's an old canal on the backside of this parcel that would have to be crossed with a bridge. So in addition to crossing the river to get to the Riverlands, it'd be a substantial amount of work. And because this is in a flood zone, there'd be considerable requirements for the structural integrity of anything that would be built there. So I think the cost in the future would be much higher than what anybody is predicting right now if we go ahead with this project.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else care to be heard that hasn't addressed the issue yet? Anyone else who has or has not? Yes, Mr. James.
I too am against this for a couple of reasons. One is that it takes property off the tax roll. And what made me say this is because, one of the town meetings we had, one of the things folks in the audience said was that they were in favor of retail marijuana because it brought tax money into town. And that resonates, because people are always asking, "What are you doing to bring money into town, not to take it out?" I understand that there is a need for parking, and I understand the master plan and all that. However, I don't think it's the proper location. It's, you can't walk anywhere. Where are you going to walk? There's not a sidewalk all the way down. There is parking at the Blackington Building for those businesses. The restaurants across the street have ample parking, because they have expanded it. The other thing is that I think Mr. Superdine is right. When you start making the parking lot, it's not going to be only $15,000. Then you have to maintain it. You have to clean the snow. You have the liability if it's a municipal parking lot. And based on what residents have said in the past, the concern about adding businesses to keep the tax rate as low as possible, I don't see this as a viable opportunity for the town at this point in time.
Thank you. Mr. Chamberlain.
Tom Chamberlain, 25 Bennett's Road, a member of the Trails Committee. Those of you who know me, I retired five years ago from the Army Corps of Engineers, so an operation of both Westville and East Brimfield Lakes. I'm very familiar with some of the issues that have been brought up, unfortunately, I think erroneously, by our two members of the Board of Selectmen. First of all, if you look at the map, you'll see the white spot on the south side of the Quinnipiac River is right across from Turner's Field, which is that green kind of trapezoidal piece of property that you see there. So that's why we can't put a crossing there, because we don't own that parcel yet. I know we're trying to acquire it. But also, this study that the WPI students are doing, and these are WPI seniors, they're in your senior year, they're working on their capstone project. So this is something they're using to really delve into environmentally and engineering to look at this particular project. They identified eight potential crossing sites. And this particular property, again, across from the Turner's Field, was brought up. But when you look at the topography, it climbs steeply right from the river. There's no place to land without significant excavation to even get a bridge across or use that property. So that's why that was ruled out. The discussion is about a lack of property, parking. I'm a past commander at the American Legion. Our property is at 507 Main Street, which is two doors down from 501 because of the particular numbering system. We currently have three other signed agreements to share our parking lot because of the lack of parking in this particular area. We need this parking. We need it. I hope you will support it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else care to be heard? Karen.
Karen Davis, 509 Main Street. I also live right near this parcel. And I agree, we have contracts with restaurants to allow them to have their patrons park in our parking lot. Couple of things that I think are not correct. There are sidewalks there, so there is adequate for pedestrian traffic. And I do not believe this is in a flood zone, so there would not be that increased cost of flood insurance. And with regard to increasing revenue, it might not be tax dollars on that parcel, but you're going to increase revenue into the businesses, which is going to turn into revenue to the town. So I think this is a win-win for everybody.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Mary.
Mary Dowling, 9 Wedwood Road. I'm also in support of it, because I think it's an ideal opportunity, as others have stated, to tie in our commercial end with our open space. But what I also want to tell people of, because I'm not sure this came up, we didn't just select this particular piece of property. The owners did approach us, because previous studies have shown that we needed parking. But we sent out a request for proposals. And this is the only one on Route 20 that responded. So for those of you who are reluctant, thinking, "Oh, maybe, you know, the beginning end of town by the gateway would be better." This is our opportunity now. This is the piece of property that responded to our request for proposal. And this is, let's not pass this up.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Hi, Dan Gonya, 44 Hillside Drive in Sturbridge. I also represent Table Three Restaurant Group, operating the Whistling Swan directly across the street. I'd like to put, to rest the idea that we have ample parking. I can tell you on a Friday night or a Saturday night, I can stand in the window and watch cars come in and exit our property, because there isn't any place to park. We've bought additional parking on Hinman Road, and that fills up quite quickly as well. Additional patrons for us from parking means additional meals tax. Every single person that comes in and buys something at our restaurant pays meals tax, and we then pay that to the town. So two misnomers, we don't have enough parking, and two, it does generate revenue for the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mary?
Mary Blanchard, again. I just want to reiterate what's already been said. They took the words out of my mouth. The parking lots that the restaurants do have are absolutely overcrowded. And as was just stated, we lose revenue. We pull in, I don't know, maybe, is it $800,000, Barbara, in meals tax? $4.50. We also get the hotel motel tax. So people coming into restaurants may also decide, decide to stay. So we really are not losing tax revenue on this piece of property. And I believe Tom Chamberlain answered all the other questions.
Thank you. Anyone else that hasn't spoken yet on this issue? Would like to be heard? Seeing no hands? I think we're ready to, for a vote. This is a two-thirds vote to approve it. And what you're voting on is to appropriate $244,000, as I understand it, to buy the property and to take down the building, and no?
No, the buildings will be taken down by the current owner. We get a clean parcel.
We get a clean parcel. Okay, got it. Okay. Two-thirds vote. The money comes from free cash, which we've already appropriated in prior years. And I don't know how much we have, but it's more than 244. Anyways, having said that, two-thirds vote. All in favor? Raise your pink cards. All opposed? It carries by far more than a two-thirds vote. Okay, we'll just move on. Okay, Article 46. This is related to the same parking lot. You may want to stay. Okay. It has to see if the town will vote to appropriate from free cash the sum of $15,000 to design the parking lot. The recommendation of the Finance Committee was five to one. Recommendation of Selectmen, as it was in the last article, is three to two in favor of it. Okay, any discussion on that? Pretty explanatory, it's $15,000 to design the parking lot. Any comments? Seeing none? All in favor? This is a majority vote? All opposed? It carries, it is not unanimous. Article 47. Construction of an affordable, single-family home in Cedar Street with Community Preservation Act housing funds. This is something that a lot of people have been looking for for a number of years. Recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve this five to nothing with two abstentions. And this money comes from money that the Community Preservation Act gets as a surcharge on the taxes. It's not technically a tax, but it's on top of your taxes, so that's what it is. Okay. Any discussion? This is a majority vote. You have discussion? Yes, sir, Mr. Neal.
Ed Neal from the Harvesting Partnership. This is a, this is one article where we're spending $201,750.
Ed, could you speak up? I can't hear.
We're spending $201,750, and it's not going to cost the town a dime. The monies here are allocated from a fund, which is held by the Community Preservation Committee. And they actually have $800,000 that is to be allocated. This is not in addition to taxes. This is on a lot the town already owns, and we've perked it. We've been discussing the construction with Habitat for Humanity and have pretty much come up with a design. So it's my recommendation, seeing as it's not going to cost any money, that the town approve this article.
Mr. Neal, just a question. To be fair, this is money that has already been set aside out of previous surcharges.
Absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you. That's my question. Anyone else care to be heard on this? You're mandated to spend so much money for different purposes. Housing is one of the purposes. So there you go. Anything else? Okay, let's vote. All in favor, it's majority. All opposed? It carries, it is not unanimous, however. Article 48, and these are stuck together, so give me a minute. Okay. The Center Office Building Storm Window Project. We lose people at every vote. Did you notice that? I wonder if any left at the end. Okay, as long as the town clerk and I are here, I guess we can have a town meeting. Okay. Center Office Building Storm Window Project. To appropriate the sum of $2,600, I guess for storm windows and center office, the recommendation, again, it comes from the Community Preservation Committee. Uh, the recommendation is of the Finance Committee to approve the article. Five in favor, no opposed, one abstention. Any discussion? It's pretty self-explanatory. Anyone else want to comment on it? Hearing none? All in favor? All opposed? It passes, and it seems to be unanimous. Article 49. Okay, Article 49 is Conveyance of the Town-Owned Land at 8 Brookfield Road. And this was land that was acquired by the town, I believe in 1955, from a deed from an individual man who lived in Southbridge, I believe. I think Gothier was his name, if I remember correctly. I looked this up. Having said that, this would empower the Board of Selectmen to entertain any and all offers, not only necessarily financial, but what the use of the property would be. And they can give the property away. They can sell it for $1 million. They can sell it to whoever they want. You will be giving them the power. They will not come back to this town meeting and say, "We're selling it to Mary Jones for $50,000." You are giving them that power to make that decision. So understand what it is, okay? And this is a majority vote article. Is there any discussion on this? Yes, sir?
Just wanted to point out--
Please identify yourself, please.
Oh, Kevin Smith, 148 Fisk Hill Road, Finance Committee as well. This one, you are turning, you're giving the Board of Selectmen the so right, three people in total to sell this property, whenever, for whatever purpose they see fit, or whatever. It's not coming back to the town meeting to be considered again. Once you give this authority to them, the majority of the Board of Selectmen can do anything they want with this property. So I just want you to think about that So I just want you to think about that while you mull over how you're going to vote.
Thank you. Thank you. If you have a comment, please direct it to the chair, and we'll certainly recognize you and allow you to speak, okay? Anyone else want to be heard on this article? Yes, sir.
Paul Damer, Shampell Road. We just talked about spending a quarter of a million to put in a couple of dozen parking spaces. To buy something the town doesn't have. Well, the town has the land on the one we're talking about now, and it's right there. It's a perfect spot. Why don't we just put the parking lot there on land that we already own and have more spaces than the other place would have? Seems to make sense.
Well, sir, that's not the topic of this article. This article is whether or not you want to empower the Board of Selectmen to sell that lot. The issue of where we should have put it, should we have bought that piece for the parking lot? That article's been considered and voted on by the town. So if you want to address your comments--
Okay. I'll put the common sense away. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir, the other Mr. Chamberlain.
Evening. Russell Chamberlain, 161 Cedar Street. One of my comments, I agree with Mr. Smith, we leave, we just voted two-thirds vote to buy a piece of property, and we're allowing three people, they could sell it for $5,000. Yes, it may not be that way, but we're allowing three people in this town to sell a piece of property that in my opinion is an asset to this town. I don't know if any of you recall, one of our planning board meetings, we had a meeting about reconstructing Route 20 from Cedar Street to Fiskdale. One of the proposals is to put a center strip down with tree-lined center strip with 10-to-12-foot lanes. Anybody that travels Fiskdale on a Thursday, Friday, Saturday evening knows it takes forever to get from Cedar Street to Brookfield Road. Try and take a fire truck down a 10-foot, 12-foot lane, what are you going to do? Or an ambulance? Or a police cruiser? I think at some point down the road, if this proposal goes through for Route 20, we're going to want to put in a substation on that end of the town for policing a fire truck for flea market weekend or whatever. Then we're going to be back here spending quarter of a million dollars on a piece of property to put in a substation. I think that needs to be considered. Now, if we want to lease the property, great. I have no objection to that, but I cannot see allowing three people in this town to sell that piece of property. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to be heard on this? Yes, sir, Mr. Bridges.
We got an estimate of renovating the existing building. It was a half million dollars. To renovate the existing building. And that parcel, and I'm new to town, I don't really know the history of it, but I know it's been sitting there. So one of the impetus I had to go to the Board of Selectmen, we've got to do something. Now, when we redo Route 20, we may keep a piece of that frontage for extra right-of-way and make that parcel smaller. We have to look at the maps and what makes sense. What this does do, it allows us to enter a long-term lease with somebody or sell it. Now, if we enter a long-term lease, that's going to be long-term. We expect someone to make a capital investment, and they're going to expect to get their money back out of that project. So it's going to be at least a 20-year lease, maybe longer. So this does allow the Board of Selectmen to make a decision, but it also allows a property owner interested in making a capital investment to know they're going to get a return on their investment.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Penny Dumis, 136 Walker Pond Road. I want to agree wholeheartedly with Mr. Chamberlain and Mr. Smith. It's a five-member Board of Selectmen. Three out of five could decide what to do with that parcel. They put it simply. I just want to say again, because that really nice opportunity that just came forward for the parking lot, two out of five of the selectmen voted opposed to it. One of the selectmen voted against the Habitat for Humanities project. Three people could decide what the outcome and the development on that corner would be. So I don't think it's a good idea.
Thank you. Anyone else care to be heard? Yes, sir.
Hi, Lee Peterkin, 70 Holland Road. I just, I just want, I have a question. I want to be clear about what a no vote means. If we vote no on this, the property stays as it is?
Yes, they could still solicit any bid that they want, but they would have to come back to the town meeting and say, we want to sell it to so-and-so under these conditions for so much. So, and they have now, if this passes, they have the freedom to wheel and deal, if you will, and accept whatever RFPs, Request for Proposals, is what that stands for, and kind of negotiate the best deal if they think they can. Now, if it's denied, they will have to, I guess, come back. I guess they could try this again, but probably would be, we want to sell it to Mr. X for Y dollars, and then we'd have to approve it or disprove it.
Right. So this sounds too nebulous to me. If there was a more concrete proposal than a, well, then we could debate the merits, but it's so up in the air, it just doesn't seem like a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Mr. Supernat?
Yes, Michael Supernat, 14 Flamm Lane. I'm strongly opposed to this article. I think if we had a very specific proposal for the sale and came back to town meeting, I might be in favor of it. I would definitely be in favor of leasing the parcel, but we can do that anyhow without this article. And we could do a long-term lease if we have a proposal and come back to town meeting and get your approval. I thought it was presumptuous when the town administrator, after being here less than a month, told me he was going to sell 8 Brookfield Road. And I, you know, I can see a future public purpose for that. Many, I mean, just a park and ride facility, a place for public transit, for public safety to have a location during the flea market. There's lots of public purposes for that parcel. It may be in the future that it might be a great place for commercial development in the future, but at this point, I am not ready to say that. I think, I don't want the authority from town meeting to be able to sell this parcel at this time. I would rather come back to you with something more concrete, more specific.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we're ready to vote? An I vote, a yes vote, would allow the Selectmen to negotiate the sale of this parcel at the best terms that they feel they could get, and with no further action by the town on it. A no vote means if they get a buyer, they may have to, they will have to come back and propose it to us, okay? Having said that, all in favor of the article as written? All opposed? The article is soundly defeated. It was not unanimous. Article 50. This is for the acquisition of the property at 53 Holland Road. The, you have to, if you look at your warrant, you'll see that the recommendation of the Finance Committee is that no action be taken. In Sturbridge parliamentary procedure, that means that unless somebody jumps up and makes a motion that we approve it as written, that this thing will die on the vine. We won't take any further action. It'll just go away. Be tabled, perhaps is a good analogy. I don't know what else you would call it. Do we, we don't seem to have a substitute motion, so we will move on to Article 51. It'll be deemed Article 50, that is. It'll be deemed I've been defeated. Okay, Article 51. Replacement of a rooftop HVAC unit at the public safety complex. Is somebody saying there's a lot of hot air there? I don't know. Stuff to say. The recommendation of the Finance Committee is that the article be approved as written, five to two. Any discussion on that? Seeing none? All in favor? All opposed? There's a lot of hot air by this speaker on the stage here, that's for sure. We know that. It appears to have passed unanimously, by the way. It did not. Were there anyone opposed to it? Put their hands up. Oh, okay, my friends over here. Okay, good. It passes. It is not unanimous. Okay, Article 52. An article to amend the zoning bylaw for changes in definitions. Now, a couple of things about zoning bylaw changes. We have to have, the planning board has to meet and consider these changes, and they have to vote on whether they like them or dislike them. They don't have to vote to approve them. They just have to have a vote to consider them and make a recommendation to this meeting. So I guess we need to report from the Finance, I'm sorry, the Planning Board, as to what they did on this.
Charlie Blanchard, 26 Bachbar Road, Chairman of the Planning Board. The Planning Board held a public hearing on December 17th on this article, and we voted to support the proposed amendment to the zoning bylaw as written, and asked that the article be placed on the annual town meeting warrant, and the vote was six to zero, unanimous for all intending.
Mr. Blanchard, in one paragraph or less, can you give us what this article does?
Yes. Actually, this article and the other, the two after this, all sort of go together. Basically, we have two articles. One is the Chapter 14, the Special Use District, and the other one is 15, the Planned Unit Business Development article. And these were adopted back in 1998 with the hope that we could have planned unit business developments that allowed unique combinations of uses on very large parcels. The parcels were 50 acres or 25 acres with special permit. And over the years, we never really got much activity or interest in that particular zoning. And in addition to that, several of the parcels have been used for something else. So basically, what these three articles do is, the first one that we're addressing right now is to try to clarify and open up some of the definitions that we had. We had a definition for commercial recreation use, and we've expanded that to be more specific and also to bring in some uses that we see to be more likely to be entertained and used currently. The second article, the next one we'll be talking about, if you'll let me speak on it, would just be that we would be getting rid of the planned unit business development portion of it and putting some of those uses into the Special Use District. And the last one is just sort of clarifying some of the other parts of the bylaw that allows us to, for example, entertain the use of a building 35 feet or higher with a special permit.
Thank you. Anyone else want to be heard? This is a two-thirds article. Zone, bylaw, I'm sorry. Amendments to zoning bylaws require a two-thirds vote. Anyone else want to be heard on this? I think we had a good explanation from Mr. Blanchard. Hold on. Town Council points out to me that there was a typographical error in the recommendation of the Finance Committee. I'm sorry? In the actual article. Okay, I don't think that I, honestly, I don't think I have that language. This is what I have for Article 52. Okay. Okay, Article 52. Two-thirds vote. We ready to vote on this thing? All in favor signify by raising your petal pink card. All those opposed? It passes by more than a two-thirds majority. Now, Article 53. Article 53. We've had Mr. Blanchard explain it to us, but I am told that there's a typographical error in here. We'll get to it. Hold on. And again, it's at the top of the second page of that article, where we have a bunch of strikeouts under 1402. We continue on to the next page, and instead of it being underlined, which would indicate the new article, it is put in bold. But the bold here means this is going to be added to the statute, the bylaw, after we strike out the offending part, so to speak. So it should be underlined, but instead it came out bold. That's the typo. It's not, the language is all there, the words are correct, it's just how it was treated. Everybody understand that? Okay. Any discussion on Article 53? Again, a two-thirds vote. Seeing none? All in favor? All opposed? Apparently, that was unanimous. Did I see? No. It was not unanimous. Okay. Thank you. It's hard to catch the whole room sometimes. Okay, thank you, Penny. Article 54. Okay, another zoning article, and we've had the explanation. This is a two-thirds vote, and it was recommended by the Finance Committee, seven to nothing. Any discussion on this? Hearing none? All in favor? All opposed? It carries by more than two-thirds. It is not, however, unanimous. Article 55. The Electronic Voting Committee. I'm going to call upon our deputy moderator, Bill McDonald, to come up and handle this article. The reason I'm doing that is the town clerk and I are the sponsors of this article, and to avoid any question of impropriety or conflict of interest and so on and so forth, I think we're going to ask Bill to handle it for us.
Thanks a lot, Mike. We don't get called out of the bullpen very often, so this is one of our few times to shine here. Article 55 basically is a suggestion to create an ad hoc electronic voting committee to investigate it and report to the annual town meeting in June. Basically, to try to implement some kind of an electronic voting system. And as the article states, the committee's going to be consisting of the moderator, the town clerk, the IT director, and two voters who are going to be appointed by the moderator and the clerk. Is there any discussion? Everyone, the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen both voted in favor, I believe. Should we just have the vote? Mike, would you like to say anything? No? I hate to get you up out of your seat there.
Okay, Michael Caplet, 38 Bentwood Drive. 38, oh, thank you. Very well done. Thank you. Okay. Can you hear me now? Payback, huh? That's great. Okay. The town clerk and I have been trying to, for a couple of years now, work on electronic voting. What is electronic voting? It's taking something that'll probably look like, maybe a little bit bigger than the key fob of your car, and when each question comes up, you'll be allowed to either vote yes, vote no, or abstain. It'll do two things. It'll be a lot faster, and it'll be probably a lot more accurate. As good as I am, ha-ha, sometimes it gets hard to read some of the votes, particularly in this auditorium up in the balcony, because lighting up there just is not too good. So when people are holding up their cards and they're not holding it up, it's kind of hard to tell. So it'll make the voting quicker and probably more accurate. Now, it's also more private, too, so that your neighbor doesn't know that you voted against, you know, his sewer easement or whatever it was, okay? And it'll give us a chance to do it. Now, Lynn and I have gone to the town of Grafton and watched them do it, and it's pretty spiffy. It works pretty well. And people, every town that's adopted this in the Commonwealth is liking it. Now, obviously, at some point, we'd be coming here and say, we want to rent a system, we want to buy a system. We're not asking for any money tonight. We want to look at some of these systems and figure out what's the best fit for Sturbridge, trying to use the facilities in this building, and also, you know, come up with what the best price is. So we don't have those answers for you. We had one night, we had everything here, we were ready to give a demonstration, and we couldn't get it to work. A part of the, that's what happened. It's the truth. So part of the problem is, is that none of us are really technologically savvy. We need people, the IT director and some people that can help us making sure that we're getting the right thing for Sturbridge. So that's what this is all about. Right now, will cost nothing. Hopefully, we'll have a report back in June, and you voters can decide what you want to do with it. Thank you.
Any further discussion? In that case, we'll go right to the vote. All in favor? Signify by raising. Any opposition? Seeing none? It unanimously passes. Oh, I'm sorry. There's one. It wasn't unanimously, but more than necessary, huh? Thank you.
Thank you, Bill McDonald, for your help. And I won't forget the people that made comments about having to speak up. Don't worry. Okay. That passes. Article 56. Additional appropriation for Fisk Hill Water Pump Station. The recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve the article as written, which is to appropriate $100,000 from a water department account, so it's not new taxes, you've already paid for it with your water sewer fees. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Article 57. Unpaid bills of a previous year. Now, this is again one of those articles which is not a simple majority vote. It is a nine-tenths vote. So 90% of the people here have to vote to pay these old bills, which for some reason didn't get paid in the fiscal year. The amount is $3,615.12, and I, yes, okay, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve the article as written. Could somebody tell me what the-- Could somebody tell me what the $3,600 was about? What was it? Anyone know? Testing at the wastewater plant. I guess the obvious question is, why didn't the bill get in on time? Who knows? Okay. Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, it's all in favor? Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Is that, was there a vote against it? No, okay. Just late putting your car down, okay. Article 58. Additional funding for chemicals and testing sewer is to appropriate the sum of $20,000 from, again, chemical, I think that's the sewer department accounts. Again, you've already paid for it for your sewer fees, so it's not new money, you've already paid it. It's moving to approve the article as written is the vote of the Finance Committee. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? That was unanimous. Okay, that concludes the business. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Thank you. All in favor? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, Mr. Covino. Thank you for your help, everyone. Lynn, thank you. You do a wonderful job.